Call regular meeting of the Pennington County Commissioner's Order. Just want to remind people the copies of the agenda in the back of the room. We do use the speaker's request forms, and so if you'd like to speak on any particular item on the agenda of the day, please fill out the speaker request form and turn it into Holly as you're sitting here on your right. I'm going to ask Tragus Laster, a veteran himself, to lead us in a moment of silent reflection and then lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Chairman. While we take this moment of silence, let us all reflect and honor those who have served as well for this Veterans Day coming up this week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Laster. Need to review and approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Veterans recognition. And I think scrolling behind me are the names of the veterans that work for Pennington County. There's nearly 150 names on there. We appreciate each and every one of them for the service they provided and continue to provide, so thank you very much. I would also like to call on Barry Tice, Pennington County Veterans Service Office. Barry, you may bring your contingent with you.
I spend plenty of time up here, and I think it was important to let the veterans from our office, but especially Alex Purcell, the Assistant Director of Health and Human Services in the Veteran Service Office, share a few words about this entire month and thank the men and women who have served. So I'm going to take a step back and let Alex and Tom say a few words.
Very good. Welcome, Alex.
Good morning. Alex Purcell, Assistant Director of Health and Human Services in the Veteran Service Office. I want to thank you guys all for inviting us down here today just to provide a couple of brief remarks. I'm going to introduce Tom Valet and Lee Borries. They're the Veteran Service Office for Pennington County. And just take a moment to thank everybody, every veteran in Pennington County that's served and as well as those especially working for Pennington County. Thank you all. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tom to kind of talk about the way we serve 12,000 veterans or more in Pennington County. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for having us here today. Thanks, Alex and Barry. They're very great supervisors. They allow us to do our job. What we do is help veterans get benefits when they get out of service. And as Alex mentioned, 2,500, or 12,500 veterans, and that's expanding rapidly as we all see folks coming in from other states. I see about one in six veterans that I'm seeing right now are coming from another state. That has to do with the services that not only our county provides, but our state provides. And we're seeing the expansion of Ellsworth come on to play with 3,000 more veterans plus their families coming here in just a couple of years. So that's going to be a very large impact for what we do in our outreach to the TAP program at Ellsworth Air Force Base. So that coupled with the new facility coming here on Mount Rushmore Road, there's going to be the Fifth Street Clinic moving over there in a few years. So that's really exciting for our vets, not only in our state, but other states are starting to hear about that. So I'm hearing that's one of the reasons that they're coming to this state. So I want to thank all the veterans in Pennington County. And again, my supervision here, they're fantastic. They allow us to do our work. Lee Borries, retired Air Force veteran, just got on our staff, fantastic addition to Health and Human Services in the Pennington County Veteran Service Office. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lee, you want to make some comments?
One thing, Mr. Chair. Next Wednesday, we'll celebrate the veterans of Pennington County. And of course, any other county who want to come into our office, the lobby will have some dessert and coffee throughout the day on Wednesday in honor of our veterans. So feel free to stop by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you all.
Next item is our consent calendar. Holly Hennings.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners needs the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items are removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 19th, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you.
I've got a motion and a second for approval of the consent calendar, which includes the minutes of the last meeting. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the regular agenda items. Item number seven. I understand that this is all the requests have been made for a continuance on this item?
Yes, Commissioners. I received a request from the attorney for the applicants with a request to continue this item until the November 16th meeting, as they are currently working on access negotiations.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion to continue?
I'll move.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number eight. Cindy.
Good morning, Commissioner. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. And before you, we have a request for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage license for Bearded Buffalo Trading Company. Owners Jeremy and Ashley Roman. Ask for approval of that application.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Move to approve the retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for Jeremy and Ashley Roman under Bearded Buffalo Trading Company LLC.
Second. Got a, I've got a motion and a second. Any public comments in regard to this item? Back to the Commission. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item nine. Items from the Sheriff.
Good morning, Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff. The first item we have should be the agreement from the Jean-Tevah Kirby Foundation. We worked with Alan Solano, their director on funding for the crisis stabilization. They're able to provide that gap funding if we don't find other funding. Their board voted to approve that. It just needs the Chair's signature.
Any public comment in regard to this? Any comments by the Commission?
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Just like to thank everybody who participated in the groundbreaking for the stabilization unit. That was pretty awesome, a lot of speakers, a lot of people that helped make this come forward. Great team effort from state, county, city. Again, Sheriff, congratulations to you for a lot of hard work that you gave to this project to make it happen. So we appreciate that, sir.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
I'll move to approve, Mr. Chair.
I've got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item two.
Next item is vehicle purchase. Trying to keep up with our fleet rotation in times of COVID supply chain disruption. And Chief Deputy Mueller did all the research on this, and we were able to find three Tahos in Iowa. And as it's laid out in here, that dealership alone normally gets 500 Tahos, and they had 75 allocated. And we're able to set aside three of those pending approval with the Commission today to purchase those. And we can't get them through the state bid anymore. So to work with the Auditor's Office, State Attorney's Office to allow for an emergency exception to the bid laws to purchase these, and it's detailed out in the memo. So just looking for a motion, there's two motions listed in the memo, to declare the three that were trading as surplus and then do purchase the three Tahos. Stand for any questions you may have.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Move to declare the following three vehicles surplus property for the purchase of the trade in conjunction with new vehicle purchase: Unit Number 43, Unit Number 55, and Unit 58.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to declare those three vehicles as surplus property. Any public comment? Any comments by the Commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. The next one is Correctional Officer.
Nope, they need.
Nope, we got to do motion two.
I get motion.
Oh, the second motion, I'm sorry.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Move to authorize an emergency purchase exception to the state bid law SDCL 5-18A-9 for Sheriff's Office to purchase three 2021 Chevrolet four-door PPE perceived for car emergency vehicles, 5983, any industry drive, Des Moines, Iowa, for a total purchase of $115,000, 11541.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Back to the Commission. One quick question. You made the comment that we can't get them off the state bid anymore, or is that?
This year, they did not have them on state bid.
Yes, okay.
Or for next year.
Okay.
Yep. Thanks, just because of the shortage.
Yep. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're down to the Correctional Officer.
All right. I jumped ahead on you there. The, again, gave you a memo in advance detailing the issue that we're dealing with in terms of our, trying to backfill our correctional officer positions. The Commission's been good to work with us on the hiring bonus. And so we got a hiring bonus. We've worked out a marketing plan to help with promoting hiring correctional officers. We have Kellah Lance coming today to interview one of our correctional officers to help talk about the correctional officer position and, you know, hiring, hopefully recruiting and hiring for filling those positions. We continue to have a number of vacancies. Our option is to close a pod or a jail cell block, if you will, or just keep working on our existing staff with lots of overtime until we get the other positions backfilled. Start to take a toll on our existing staff. At some point, we're burning them out. We'd like to be able to reward our existing staff for stepping up and filling that void in the meantime, is what we're asking for. And we met with John from HR and talked it through, because oftentimes what we do may have a ripple effect on other parts of the county. Just wanted to make them aware of what we were bringing forward. And just asking for the next year, like we did with the hiring bonus, to let us pay double time for overtime to the employees that are working as a way to reward those, again, that are stepping up and filling that void in the shifts. And we detailed it in the memo. If we did close the cell block, you could save 15 FTEs, but you lose $153,000 a month in revenue, because it'd be our paying customers we have to kick out. So we don't want to kick out our paying customers. In the meantime, we got to try and take care of our existing staff. So that's kind of the background on it. I'll certainly stand for any questions you may have.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lucroy.
Well, Kevin, I'm glad that you come up with something, because that's getting creative with the double time and also doing a promotion that you're going to do today, bringing Kellah Lance in or some other people in to show what the jobs are. What I like about this is, you know, you have it set for a year, so it's giving you some time to get the forces up and going and maybe be able to eliminate that hardship later on. So I think, I think your employees do deserve, you know, the double time. Looks like there are quite a few of them are working overtime to keep the place up and going and moving, and we just can't just shut it down like other places in our community are doing. We have to stay open 24/7, 365. So I'm in support of this.
Commissioner Laster.
Sure. Doing all this work and overtime is going to take a toll on them, even if we're paying them more. So what are the exit surveys showing us or telling us on the individuals that are leaving?
The reason they're leaving?
Yeah. I mean, in general.
Stephanie McCoy, our HR Director, she tracks all those. She can tell you specifically as to why people have left, and I'll let her address that.
Good morning. There's not one common denominator. I wish that there was, because that would be an easy fix. One just left us. They're going to go work for the Rapid City Police Department. Several have left to relocate for family reasons. We lost one to Minnesota, one to California. And then some people, corrections just isn't a career field they want to be in. So there's a variety.
Gotcha.
And we have had some retirements as well in there.
Some retirements, okay. I mean, yeah, I get it. It's going to take a toll. It's going to take a toll on these officers that are, even though they're getting paid double time, they're still working a lot of hours.
They are. So we're hoping it's a stopgap measure, because even at some point, the extra pay wears thin and you need time off, so.
Right, right. Okay.
Further questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lucroy.
I'd move to approve the overtime rate increase from one and a half time to double time for correctional officers, one correctional officers, two, and sergeants assigned to the county jail and Western South Dakota Juvenile Service Center, effective with the start of the October 31st pay period for up to 12 months.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any public comment in regard to this? Back to the Commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10. Mike Cool.
Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds. Lamp lighter and demolition project bid on October 21st. We received five bids. Four of them were within the engineer's estimate. The low bid went to a local contractor, Guffuson Builders. We had bids that range all the way from $84,334 up to over $189,000, with an average of We had a variety. This was kind of interesting from the standpoint that we had bidders from Wyoming and Minnesota where typically we're seeing contractors just within our area bidding on our projects. So having a contractor bid on Minnesota was an interesting development. Everything appears, and check with the contractor, that there's a significant difference in what our low bid is. They don't see any problems with, within their bid development. So we're asking to award this contract to Heavy Constructors Incorporated, doing business as Guffuson Builders, for that base bid amount of $84,334.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
So we've been wanting to do this project for a while. We thought it was going to cost about $150,000, I think. Mike, by the way, thank you for your service. You're also a veteran, sir. We do have some one-time fund. Instead of using his contingency number, we have one-time funding that we still had left that we put in our budget. That was for next year, though, wasn't it?
We moved, that money was moved into the accumulated building, and that's where I'm requesting that we.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Just make.
And I'm seeking just approval at this point, and we'll come back with a budget supplement. We're up towards the end of our capital improvement money that comes out of accumulated building. And so I believe that we'll probably have to request a supplement between $100 and $110,000.
So bottom line is, it's going to cost 84. And what's that basically doing, Kevin? Do you, or Mike, do you know? Are you taking down the building? You're paving the parking lot? I mean, are you leaving anything?
Yeah. So Kevin Burton, Senior Construction Project Manager for Pennington County. We're tearing down the buildings, the foundations, terminating all the utilities, but we're leaving as much existing asphalt as possible. So we can still utilize that as parking. Where the buildings were, we're infilling all of that with gravel so that it'll act as a parking spot as well and not have a hole that's, you know, creates a safety hazard there. And then it allows us to utilize that lot in the future for something different if we don't want to use it as a parking space or develop it as a finished parking lot. You know, we don't have to go to that expense if we're going to do something different. So.
I appreciate that.
From our understanding was the board wished to allow an opportunity to see how some things develop, and this allows us some flexibility before we move on with spending more money on that project.
And it's about half the price, we thought, which is even better.
Yes. I guess maybe I should explain, we have a bid of $84,000, and I'm suggesting that we're going to have to request funding, but there's much more that goes into the overall projects, such as testing, inspections. We had to do asbestos abatement out of the facility already. So we've spent $20,000, $25,000 so far.
$110,000 with the 84 plus what you've done before.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Additional expenses that'll come out of buildings or that we need for the project would be geo-engineered to make sure that soil compaction is correct so that we can continue to park cars on it and it doesn't sink. You know, we don't want to have to redo this again, so we want to make sure it's tested and that we have the right proper compaction. We want to make sure the utilities are terminated correctly. And then we want to post signage there, signage just outside of the contractor's contract. So that signage would be additional for us, just for Pennington County parking only.
Thank you, Kevin.
Commissioner Roskin.
So Mike, I see there was two bids that came in the same. If they would have been the two lowest, how do you work that? Just a question.
Go ahead. In state statute, it says that local contractor would get the award.
So there's one in-state, one out-state?
Yeah.
So the in-state would have the preference?
Correct.
Wanted some clarification on that.
Mr. Chair.
That's why the spread, almost $100,000, so I'm glad we went out and got five bids.
Commissioner Lucroy.
Yeah. Kevin and Mike, thanks for your work on this, and you're absolutely right. You know, I kind of looked over that night. I was kind of surprised with that asbestos removal. That always jumps everything quite a bit higher in some of the testings that we require to get, to be able to do what we need to do. I mean, we just, so I appreciate your work on that. And you're absolutely right. The reason why it's so much further down is because we can still use it as a parking lot as we're doing, and if in the future we decide something else needs to be done differently, we can make those adjustments. But I think it was a good, good idea to hold off a little bit and just use it instead of spending all that money making into a parking lot, then come back three years later and do something different. So we appreciate what you guys are doing on this.
Sure.
I can make one additional.
Yes, go ahead, Kevin.
We've also been able to allow emergency services to utilize the building for further training.
Yeah.
And that's been really, really good for that apartment. We intend to continue that up until the point where we can demo the building. We're trying to coordinate with Dustin and everybody that, right before they get ready to demo the building, we can actually do breaching exercises on that. Helps all of our emergency services train, and it's really nice that we have that building for that opportunity.
I know we got a few buildings that, that training would be very helpful.
Yeah. Every time they hear that we're going to demo a building, they are on the phone pretty quickly with us, asking if they can have that opportunity.
So Mike, if we just partially demo it, we're not going to totally re-asspect the parking lot, how long can we leave that parking lot in that condition relative to the city zoning
We may have to, you know, start adding some additional things there to compensate for issues that come up there. Technically, we're not supposed to have leave exposed gravel areas utilized within the city limits as parking areas and stuff, but we can get by for a temporary amount of period. I don't believe that we're going to run any issues for a year or so, something, but we may have more information relative to some things that we think may develop within that timeframe, so.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment in regard to this? Back to the Commission. Any further comments by the Commission? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dustin Willett, you guys are just continually trying to confuse me.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. May I beg just a moment of privilege before I launch into COVID-19? And Kevin brought it up, but I actually had written down on my notes here that I'd just like to recognize Buildings and Grounds and the Highway Department, since Joe and Sean are here. When, when properties like that become available, there is a huge training value, and oftentimes the timelines are very, very, very compressed. And so one of these last trainings, both with the Fire Department and with the 82nd Civil Support Team, Buildings and Grounds went, and Kevin went way and above and beyond to get us access to that building and work with us to allow us to do that training. That was really, really fantastic. And then for our 82nd Civil Support exercise, one Buildings and Grounds, or I'm sorry, Highway, was fantastic in last minute, giving us barricades that we could put up and coordinate some of those areas to use for that exercise. Great Western Bank allowed us use of that lot behind the Lamp lighter property for that exercise, which was, which was really nice. And then the last thing there is just all of the county departments and employees. That space was already utilized quite a bit by county employees for parking, and they all very graciously avoided that parking area for those two days that we had set aside for the exercise. So I just wanted to give acknowledgement, recognition, and thanks to Buildings and Grounds, Highway Department, Great Western Bank, and all of the county departments that stayed out of that area parking wise. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll just run down through some stats and then happy to stand for any questions. So we're currently sitting at a little over, just under 1,100 cases. 1,099 active cases in Pennington County. We're at 249 deaths, about 2,200 in the state of South Dakota. Our positivity rate, so this is again that seven-day rolling average of how many tests are coming back positive. This is the number that both the South Dakota Department of Health and the CDC use for measuring the spread or the transmission within the community. We're still high by any measure. Most of the counties in South Dakota are still in that high rate. So according to Department of Health, our positivity rate is 21.5%. Monument's number and CDC's number are both in the 18% range, so a little bit lower than the Department of Health's rate. But again, we're looking at, we're hoping for lower than five. So the fact that we're still up in the 20 and the 18% just indicates that the virus is still moving through our community. However, our new infections are being slightly outpaced by our recoveries, so our trend is generally downward. Our high was 2,192 cases on September 17th. So from then till now, we've dropped by about 1,000 cases. Again, we still continue to have new cases, but our recoveries are outpacing our new infections. In terms of vaccine, so we've got like 4,400 of J&amp;J that are complete. 33 of those have had their booster. On the Pfizer, we've had in the county 32,600 that are complete. 8,300 have had their booster. And Moderna, 85,000, or I'm sorry, 8,500 that are complete with 440 with a booster. So the total complete series of vaccination in Pennington County is 45,589, and about 8,775 have had their third boosters or with the J&amp;J, the second booster, first booster, second shot. The actual 2020 census numbers put Pennington County at 109,222. So if we just use that number, Pennington County is sitting at about 42% vaccinated. But one thing that the CDC and the state do that I haven't done before, when I give these numbers to the Commission, and it's because the data, again, gets a little squishy, is the state reports on percentage of population 12 and up. And I've never done that for Pennington County, and I can't really break 12 and up in Pennington County, because the census data that I have does a 10 to 14. So I've got to include the 12 to 14-year-olds. But if I draw the line at 14-year-olds and subtract that number from the population But if I, if I draw the line at fourteen-year-olds and subtract that number from the population, then that actually puts us at age-adjusted, so eligible folks in Pennington County, we all over half, we're fifty-two percent vaccinated of eligible people for the vaccine. In South Dakota, that number's fifty-eight percent, so we're just a little behind the, the South Dakota average. In terms of hospitalizations, today we're sitting at, at fifty-three hospitalizations in the, in the Monument system out here in the west. Friday was when Monument, every Friday Monument releases the vaccinated versus unvaccinated. It is a little telling, out of the seven patients on ventilators in the Monument system, all seven are unvaccinated. Out of the nine patients in ICU in the Monument system, all nine patients are unvaccinated. So there's no vaccinated patients in the ICU, there's no vaccinated patients on ventilators. There are eleven vaccinated patients in the hospital, which is about twenty-eight percent of the total hospitalized, folks in the COVID or in the, in the Monument system with COVID-19. About two hundred and five patients across the state of South Dakota that are currently hospitalized. In terms of vaccinations, Monument Mall Clinic, so up in the, in the space in the mall, they've dropped down to three days a week, so Monday, Wednesday, Friday, seven AM to four forty-five, and you can get your, your initial vaccine or your boosters. With the boosters, if you had the Pfizer or the Moderna, they're still at that six months out from, from completing your initial two series and this is still that group of sixty-five or older, high-risk, underlying medical condition or in a healthcare setting. With the Janssen or the J&amp;J, they say at least two months since your initial J&amp;J shot and anybody over the age of eighteen is eligible for a booster after two months with the J&amp;J. And then you can mix and match. So if you had Pfizer, you can get a Moderna booster. If you had Moderna, you can get a Pfizer booster. If you had Pfizer, you can get a J&amp;J booster. If you had J&amp;J, you can get a, a Pfizer. I mean, it's, it's all, it's all mix and match in terms of, of booster. And, and those are available throughout the community. The different pharmacies that are offering COVID-19 vaccination and almost all of these will offer flu vaccine as well, is Walgreens, Safeway, Community Health, Walmart, Family Fair, CVS, Sam's, obviously Monument, so really anywhere that, that you do your doctoring has access and availability to both COVID and, and flu vaccines for those that want to take advantage of that. I always talk about that CDC ensemble model, right now there's eight models that they smash into one, take the average, and that shows us again with a, a very slight general downward trend over the next two weeks. So hopefully we see that come out. If we think back to that first spike, you know, back in the December timeframe of last year, we went up super fast and came down super fast. This last time in September, we went up super fast, we started to come down fast and then we're just slowly, slowly, slowly starting to decrease, decrease a little bit. So hopefully that continues, hopefully we continue that downward trend. Round city area schools, as of this morning, we've got seventeen staff and eighty-nine students that are active. Grandview is still closed with a total of thirty-one staff and students out. The superintendent closed Grandview simply due to a staffing shortage, not enough teachers and administrators to, to keep that, that building functioning the way it needs to function for the students, so those students are continuing to do online learning, those students that are, are normally attend Grandview Elementary. Some of the big news with, with vaccine is the FDA, just a few days ago, October twenty-ninth, authorized the Pfizer vaccine for ages five to eleven. And thirty-three minutes ago, the CDC Advisory Board began their meeting to, to evaluate that F, FDA recommendation. So when the CDC Advisory Board finishes up their meeting today, we should have a, a path forward on, on what vaccinations for five to eleven-year-olds with the Pfizer vaccine is going to look like. The anticipation is that at the end of the day today, we will have an approved vaccine for five to eleven. So the next piece of information that will come out is, is how does that look? How does that work in the community? So that's, that's probably the, the, the most hot-button topic right now is, is what we're doing with that five to eleven age group. I did pull up some other information that was just a little interesting. So the CDC runs the VAERS program or the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System. This is where people, when you get your vaccine, they send you a text message and you let them know if you, you know, how you're feeling after the vaccine for, for different periods of time. That database is minable, so I can get in there and, and anybody can get in there and look at some of that data. Granularity, you can check by number, but really it's down to a state level. You can, you can look at trends really across a state. So in South Dakota, we've got well over four hundred and fifty thousand people that have been vaccinated. In the state of South Dakota? Out of that, out of that four hundred and fifty thousand people that have been vaccinated, I, I took that data and just said, how many people have actually been hospitalized with signs and symptoms post-vaccine? And again, please keep in mind that there's no direct correlation, these are just people that had symptoms after the vaccine, there's no way to link whether or not it really was the vaccine or not, they just. Know how many people ended up in the hospital post-vaccine? And out of four hundred and fifty thousand vaccinated, it was a hundred and forty, so point zero three percent of people that have been vaccinated, point zero three percent actually ended up hospitalized with some type of sign or symptom post-vaccine. So again, just a, one more data point that really drives home how safe the COVID-19 vaccines that we have available to us are. Flu, we've got zero deaths and zero hospitalization in our flu season to date. Please keep in mind that, that March is really when we get hammered by the flu, we, we start seeing it increase typically in February, March we get hammered, April it starts to die off a little bit. So we're still very, very, very early in our flu season. Really, we've only got about forty cases that we think across the state that have been confirmed flu, but zero deaths and zero hospitalizations from the flu so far. And then the last little piece that I had written down was just, there's still some people talking about different variants, so there's a lot of variants out there. It's a good, good lesson in, in your Greek alphabet, so you know, there's gamma and epsilon, eta, iota, kappa, zeta, mu, delta, so lots of different variants out there. The only variant of concern that we're really looking at in South Dakota or the United States for that matter is Delta. Delta's still our, our concern. So South Dakota's in the Sentinel Program, which means a small percentage of the tests that we run get sent out and actually looked at genetically to see what kind of variants we have. Runs about over a four-week period, so out of the last four-week period, Delta accounts for seventy-eight percent of the variants that we're seeing in South Dakota. Alpha, the original one, twenty-one percent, and then gamma and beta that are, are, you know, less than one percent, very, very small numbers there. So, but seventy-eight percent, so by, by far and away, well over three-quarters of, of what we're seeing is, is Delta and that, that kind of holds true across the country. Those are the numbers that I had written down, happy to stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair. One second, Ron. Question, on the, on the sixty-five for the, for the vaccine, sixty-five and older to get the booster? Is that a guideline established by CDC or by the state or is that?
Yep, so this whole process, FDA recommendation and then CDC oversight, the CDC and the FDA each have, have advisory bodies or, or governing bodies that, that look at the data and the FDA makes recommendations, the CDC makes recommendations off of those recommendations and they come out with a, with a, a authorization. And so between the CDC and the FDA on the Pfizer and the Moderna, the, the current authorization for boosters is that sixty-five and older and then the, if you live in a healthcare system, if, if, if long-term healthcare is what I was looking for there, or a high risk or medical and that, and actually the, the underlying medical conditions, it's a pretty extensive list.
Okay, so maybe I'm not understanding the word authorization because it appears locally that we have plenty of vaccine. And those under sixty-five, if they would choose to go get their booster, the vaccine appears to be available for them, but what does authorization mean?
Yep, I, I understand the question. So, you know, it was a big deal when, when Pfizer came off of the emergency use, use authorization and it was actually just an approved medicine, but that was for the two-dose regime. The boosters, this third dose or the second with J&amp;J is still being done under an emergency use authorization and so that emergency use, use authorization is very, very specific in what the FDA says you can do. So those, that, that guidance comes from what the FDA and CDC say is an acceptable use for that, for that pharmaceutical.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Roskin.
Dustin, I have two questions. First would be, four hundred and fifty thousand people in the state of South Dakota have been vaccinated?
Ish, a little higher than that, but yeah.
According to the last census, what's the population of South Dakota?
Oh, that's one number I did not write down, so I, I don't have that exact number.
Second question, out of all the information that you just gave us and statistics, what should we be most concerned with, in your opinion?
In, in Dustin's personal opinion, the fact that the data we have shows that the vaccine is incredibly safe and that the vaccine keeps you out of the hospital with, with critical illness and we only have about half of our eligible population that's vaccinated. So those, those pieces together, it's safe, it's effective, only half of us in the county have it, so.
I did my math right, I think the population of South Dakota is roughly eight hundred and ten thousand.
About right.
Eight hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-seven.
So if you divide four hundred and fifty thousand by that, that would give you the percent of the state that's been vaccinated.
Fifty-eight, fifty-eight percent fully vaccinated according to Department of Health.
Thank you, Holly.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Roskin.
This number, this, this question came while you were talking, so I apologize if you don't have the numbers for it, but maybe next time this will be one of those that, that you get, those that are in the hospital, what's the age range? Do you have the age range for those that are vaccinated, vaccinated in the hospital versus those that are unvaccinated in the hospital? I'd be interested in that data point next time if you don't have that right offhand.
I certainly don't have that offhand and I'm not entirely sure that I have easy access to that information, but I'll, I'll follow up on that and see what I can come up with.
Okay.
Any further questions? Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
Appreciate the report. We're at item twelve, items from the chair and the commission members. Any items Travis, you want to?
Yes, I'll give you all an update on my meetings last week. I spent three days with Ellsworth CE, Civil Engineering and South Dakota Ellsworth Development Authority with individuals that are impacted by the A-triple-F firefighting foam water contamination at Wells and, and District Four, basically the base to, to the Cheyenne River along the Box Elder Creek Plume. It was good meetings as far as, a lot of people showed up to those. The basic overall justice meeting was for SADIDA and the base to let the, the citizens know that have been impacted know what the plan of action is now, that they heard their concerns about not being annexed into Box Elder, that they, many of them did not want Box Elder water. And the, the plan going forward is that SADIDA is, is taking a year to design with, KTM designs a water system that's going to be a well in the Madison out east of Black Hawk that will serve those that are impacted by the well contamination and others along the way from that area. And so what that, that would do is it would bring in the clean water so that they can be given water for either the rest of their lives or whatever the contract works out to be for those that have been impacted. And they don't have to be annexed into Box Elder and so they don't have to worry about the, their, you know, their property taxes by being annexed into the city. And so that was the, that was the bulk of the conversation. Now each of those individual, so that are impacted by, they all have some very specific issues with their land, whether, how they're going to get the water connected to them and things of that nature. But outside of that, the, the general plan is one year for development and then two years worth of construction. It was interesting from what I, from what I gleaned from the conversation, that they were, SADIDA and the base were trying to work with Box Elder to do something and that kind of fell apart, so SADIDA is now going to go into the water business as well. They're, they're, they're the ones who, who put together the sewer plant out there, the water treatment plant out there, and so they're also going to be the ones doing the, this water system as well. And they, they, they'll be able to, they believe that they're going to be able to have capacity to sell to Box Elder to help Box Elder with some of their water problems as well. Any questions?
Questions, Travis. Thank you. Anything further?
None on that issue.
Go ahead.
Are we going on committee reports or you just?
Nope, just.
Nope, nothing.
None?
No.
I'll report on the, I did attend the Lawrence County Commission this week for a subject matter on Forestry. I'll cover that under Black Hills Council Local Governments also. Also, we, we restarted, county leadership restarted the meetings with mayors from Rapid City and Box Elder this week. We haven't done that basically since COVID started, so we was able to have an opportunity to, to share various things that are going on both with the, with the city and with the, with the county on that. We talked about housing needs, fire tanker base at the airport, which is a concern for the future, a training facility for firefighters, and then we talked about proposed sales tax legislation being introduced in the 2022 legislative session for counties. So those were items of, of discussion, just to make each other aware of what was going on in each other's entities. And I believe that's all that I have outside of committees.
Commissioner Roskin.
Well, I attended the housing summit that was held at the Hilton Garden Inn on the October the twentieth. They had three panels, very good panels at that, and the panels were comprised of policy and development, thriving communities and innovation in housing. I met some folks with Common Bond and they are in the process of doing a facility in Rapid City, it's going to be a forty-two unit facility. Thirty of those units will be restricted income, it will, the rent will be based on income and then twelve of those will be at market. And I see the, I watched Rapid City council meeting last night and, and the question was how many of those are going to be at market, how many are going to be at restricted? So that number is thirty and twelve, the last I heard at that meeting. It's a good meeting, I'm glad I went. I still can't understand what the word affordable means, if somebody knows what that means, please get ahold of me after the meeting here. I also attended the meeting with Gary and the mayor of Box Elder and Rapid City and, and the, and Steve would like to come up with a project that the county and the city can work on together, kind of bring us together, the, the commission and the council so that, you know, having a project to show the community that we are working on something for the benefit of the city and the county. Similar to the sheriff and the police department being in the public safety building, they are in one building, they have to look at each other and so we all, we're here to serve the community and so we need to be working together as partners. And then we, I think everybody's forgot, we did attend the crisis stabilization unit groundbreaking, which I thought was a great event and it's going to be a great benefit for Rapid City and Western South Dakota like, that's all I have.
Commissioner Roskin.
Thank you. I agree around affordable, subsidized and some of these words, people aren't really, they're throwing them around to get tips, they're throwing them around to get help and refining techs, getting some other things later on being used up for things that haven't quite turned out like they were supposed to, so yeah, that's been going on for a while and I never did understand affordable, so I'm with you on that. Partnership with the city, I think we've done some major partnership with the city with crisis stabilization, with some of our care campus and some major things that I think are huge for Rapid City and we didn't get that done by ourselves, Rapid City helped us. So some of those things that we have been doing, we couldn't do without the city, so we can thank the council and I don't know if we've ever went up there as a group, but maybe we should do that and do a big shout out for them and, and the things that they helped us with, they also helped us with the fairgrounds. If you remember when they picked us for the five hundred thousand to help us with the stall in barn. So they have done some major stuff for Pennington County and we haven't had that much help, I believe, before, so. Nine-one-one, is that what you said? And then today is, is Pennington County's way of thanking the veterans, the men and women who served our coun- our country and it's huge for me, it's huge for us and I think as a team, but I would like to give a wee. But I would like to give, we usually have Jerry Dur speak to us about the PTSD program that they do. It's called the Colton Dur Foundation. It's dear to my heart. All the funds are used for veterans with PTSD. Jerry lost his son due to PTSD, and that's why he has the foundation. But the big thing about the Dur Foundation is all that money is used, there's no overhead. That money is used for veterans. His whole family started this organization due to losing one of his family members. So I truly believe it's meant to be, and God works in mysterious ways in one way, in the other, it turns out to be a very positive to help many in our community that need help. So a big shout out to the Dur family, and the wife, the daughters, the sons, their police officers, they are in the military still, some of the kids. One of the daughters, Josie, her husband is in deputy sheriff. So just still serving, and same with Jerry, who serves in with Mead County, just a big service family. So a big shout out to veterans and this family that has went above and beyond to help our community, not only serve in military, but serve in our communities in a very positive way. So thank you for letting me say that, I appreciate it. And again, big shout out to our veterans. We love you. We appreciate everything you've done for us and how you've served our country, and I think Pennington County as well, with our veteran services and some of the housing that we've had veterans come up that needed help from this commission to get some of their stuff done, and from Janet, and from Utterger's Office in different areas where we have helped serve them to make sure they get some of the services that sometimes we don't want to have them forgotten. So Pennington County, I think, does it right to try to make sure our veterans are taken care of well, and without Alex and our groups over there with Rebound and other programs that help many, and then they have Veterans Court. I think we forget how much we're trying to help serve the people that have served our country, but we are here for you veterans, all of us as a team, if I could speak for us all, to see what we can get done, or if there's anything we could do to help. Thank you.
Committee reports. Back to you, Travis.
So, community health, Lloyd and I were in that meeting, and I don't think there was anything remarkable to speak about from community health. And then, I mean, nothing, they really just went over their budget, and they were in budget, and that's probably the bulk of it. Planning Commission, I'm trying to remember, I don't think there was too much issues with that, except for the one particular, the TIF was asked to be reconsidered for the interest rate. I can't remember exactly which one, but there was, one of the items was asking for TIF, and I think it was Pink Cabin, am I correct? Do you know Gary Roth?
The TIF that was requested, that's out of Anderson?
Anderson Road, yeah, I believe that was Pink Cabin LLC. And Charlie and one other individual, we're talking about, saying about trying to get a better interest rate on it because the interest rate on that TIF was 4.5%. So Charlie felt that it could probably be renegotiated a little lower. But it won't go back before the planning committee, they'll do their negotiating, and then it'll come before us, I believe.
Okay. Commissioner LaCroix?
Well, thanks Travis for the community health. The JSC, me and Deb attended that. I'll just share what I got out of it.
You were there longer, too.
Yeah. The most, what's going on is we have a joint agreement with surrounding counties to help support Juvenal Service Center, and they all pay in monthly, or sometimes you get money back, depending on how things are going. Well, this time of year, there's not enough federal stays to be able to pay the full operational costs of what's going on. So this month, or this meeting, they're going to end up having to pay in. But that's the main purpose of that. But one of the other things I got out of that meeting was, we had some sidebar discussions on sheriff's employment, correctional officers, and we're not the only ones suffering, it's pretty much statewide. And they expressed their concerns on that, most of the commissioners that were there and the people. So that was a sidebar discussion that we had, and that's what in-person meetings are good about, is you can get some more information of what's going on. Then I also had the extension advisory board meeting last night, which was postponed, and we pretty much went over the budget and where they were at, and they're looking good, and they were following the directions from Ms. Holly about the 1.5% goal for next year. They discussed that. And so the other things that we had discussion on was some other projects, there's about seven or eight projects that there's a possibility we're going to have about $5,800 left to be able to purchase to help upgrade the building. One is for LED lights. They did a trial of about, what's it, $75 of light. They did a $500 trial and replaced some of the lights to see if they liked, because they're unusual, they're smaller square, because it's an older building, so they're more or less kind of custom. The lighting was really good, they liked them, they're thankful for buildings and grounds, because buildings and grounds is the ones that came over and installed them to give them the trials. So now they're going to go ahead and move forward with the rest of the building. So they have the funding to do that. They also have some other wants and needs the board went over, and they approved, one's, I thought it was a circuit board, I didn't have my glasses with me, that was on the deal, but it's called a cricket, a piece of machinery called a cricket that I have no idea what it does. I know, I can see by her face she does. It has something to do with crafting, and like, I bet you it's something like what I'm thinking is a CNC for metal, it'll cut out patterns, and yeah. So that's what it's called a cricket.
Just admit that you have some issues.
Yeah. But, yeah, that took a lot of conversation, because people who do it love it, and you can make cards, patterns, and they decided they need that to do for some of their workshops with the kids, and that took a big discussion there. Another part of our discussion towards the end of the meeting, and I talked to Travis a little bit, and I'll talk to Gary after the meeting, is, you know, they're looking at, the building probably needs some maintenance. You know, the bathrooms are in tough shape, and, I mean, it's not, it's not like everything's falling apart, but things need to be upgraded. And I think that's something that we all need to, we had the early discussions about it, and so they were voicing their concerns, and we just want to find out where some fundings are, and they paced, you know, the previous, what's her position?
Who?
They took over for Matt.
Regina, she's the 42th advisor.
Okay, her advisor. There was an agreement with the fair board, somewhere along the line, that for like the fair, during the fair and during, I believe it's the rodeo or the stock show, there's a fourth, during the 50-50 raffles and stuff like that, that a portion of those funds go to the fair, and it's supposed to support youth or something along those lines. I think it's just some lack of communications, that maybe they don't know where that money's going, what other programs that the fair uses it for, central states for, but we could find that out, have Ron come in and give a discussion on it. But that was one thing that they were looking at. Man, if we had that 8,000, we could do the bathrooms and do more improvement on the building. So that just goes to show you how thrifty they are. They're looking at every dime for ways to do that. That was the extent of that meeting. The only thing else I can pass on is that I attended an early learner's meeting with the state last week, and a human relations commission meeting we had, and we have an executive board meeting Thursday for human relations MOA. And early indications are LNI will be coming, is not going to be canceled, so. That's the report that I got so far. So that's good news as far as, that's one of the things we're working on, is like doing the red carpet welcome for the LNI and some other stuff that we were talking. Hand games may be still canceled, because that's just too much closeness. I know we, I'm going to miss the hand games, I like doing that, but that's something that they're kind of doing some scaling back on LNI, but we'll be looking forward to that next year. The other thing I had was on the youth council. We had an executive meeting on that, and they're lining up, they're doing a really good job, the Washington trip for these youth coming up in March. And so I think that's going to be pretty exciting. We're going through the process of getting applications for the young people and going through, and we're going to be doing that. So I'll keep you updated on that. That's it.
Okay. A couple of things that I, Ron and I both attended the Black Hills Council Local Government meeting, and one of the main areas of interest there included what the US Forest Service is doing as far as the amount of timbering they're going to allow in the Black Hills in the future. And currently for 2021, they're down to 181,000 cubic feet of timbering, and 22, that is reduced to like 140,000, and 23, all the way down to 91,000. And so, oh, 24 is 88,600. So it just keeps reducing. And just to give you a little bit of feeling of what the need may be for the industry, for the timbering industry, although Jim Nyman wasn't in attendance at either of these meetings, but it was stated that his operation, which you recognize, he's already closed the Hill City operation, still operates out of Spearfish and out of Hewlett, but he needs about 160,000 just to make him sustainable in his industry. And so following the discussion at the council local governments, Steve Cosell, who is the district manager for the US Forest Service out of Spearfish, was addressing the Lawrence County Commission last Tuesday, and so I went to that meeting to hear that discussion also. And he does say that they are, if people have ideas of where more timbering can be done in a practical manner, that they're open to hearing those concerns in those areas. There was also a meeting in, Randy Dibert, Lawrence County Commissioner, is our representative for the Western Regional NACO, and when he attended that meeting, he did, two weeks ago, he did get the opportunity to visit with the US Forest Service Chief and his immediate assistant, brought these concerns to them. Last week, Jim Nyman and others from the area, in fact, what's Uban's name?
District?
No, the gentleman that's been representing former Forest Service.
Oh, Ben?
Ben.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, okay. So, and Ben was with them at that meeting, and apparently that was, the report back was that it was a very positive meeting relative to having them maybe take a look at the information that actually was put together for the Forest Service, by the Forest Service, relative to the amount of timbering to take place. And there's been a challenge made to that data as to whether or not it was accurate data or not. The concern is, is that the challenge of this information may not be in enough of a timely fashion in order to keep the industry going. And one of the statements that was made in Lawrence County was that Colorado lost most of their timbering industry during the cutbacks in their forests, and now they cannot, they're having a difficult time even trying to rebuild a timbering industry in that area. And that's the concern that would be here also, of once you're closing down, it's very difficult to restart. So it does become on the radar for some immediate type assistance and concern to be expressed in order to try to keep this feasible. So, and in two weeks, we do have our district manager, Jim Gubbs, and we will also have Ben, and I struggle with Ben's last name all the time.
I say Woodkey.
It's Woodkey.
Woodkey, are both scheduled to be here in two weeks for this similar discussion on this. So I think it'll be interesting, and something that needs to be moved up probably a little bit higher on our radar on it. Also, yeah, the crisis stabilization unit, we did have that groundbreaking, it's going to be a great facility, fill some super needs for the entire area of Western South Dakota, and I agree with Commissioner Haidcock, we have worked on some projects with the city, this being one of them, crisis stabilization center. They contributed hard dollars toward this effort, along with foundations and nonprofits and private industry. And so to make this happen, and the state coming up with the largest share of it. So there have been some joint projects, and maybe we need to banner those about a little bit more, making sure people understand that we're not always just working on our own, that we're trying to work in a cooperative effort to make things better for our constituents and the residents of the area. That's all I have. Commissioner Raskin, act.
Well, I did, as Gary said, we attended the Black Hills Council Local Government, and Ben, how do you pronounce Ben's last name, Holly?
Woodkey.
Woodkey, okay. So he is the executive director of the Black Hills Forest Resource Association. So our 16th meeting later this month, he will be here, and Mr. Jim Gubbs with the district ranger for the Mystic District here, be interesting to hear the testimony from both of those individuals. Deb and I attended the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission meeting. We are working on a 65-unit project, it's going to be located on Haynes Avenue by Vicky Powers, by the Vicky Powers Park. Our, just the rough budget for construction costs excluding the land, which we own, it's going to be 9,750,000 or roughly 150,000 a unit.
How many units?
Sixty-five. So the county allocated $2 million towards this project for one time, out of their one-time funding. Right now, we, our update on that would be, we hired Upper Deck Tim Cheever to put together a package that will identify, it'll show elevations, rough cost. This is the first step to this project, but the project is moving. Our executive director stated that he completed a letter of interest for community development block grants, funds, following submission of the letter, the housing authority was now invited to apply for the funds. The executive director explained that these funds could be utilized in the development of affordable housing or for this particular project. And those, it's my understanding that those community development block grant funds will come from the city of Rapid City. Our executive director advised that he and Robert Selena met with Commissioner Littlebear concerning job classifications and wage and salaries. He stated that this group will continue to meet for the purpose of moving forward a plan to present to the full board that is equitable and fair for the employees of the housing authority. And lastly, our executive director reported that he will be going to Pierre at the end of October, first part of November, for the purposes of discussing financing options for our 65-unit development. So we got the $2 million from the county, and now we're looking for any other funding from outside of our authorities. So it's going to be an aggressive project, and I'm really glad to be working on it with Deb and the other commissioners. And Brian Albach, he is a, just doing a great job, I think he's been in about 10 months now as our executive director, and it's really a solid commission, and it's fun moving forward for a while, or for a change.
Commissioner Haidcock?
Thank you. JSC, Lloyd kind of laid it out, basically that joint powers agreement with the sheriffs probably increased this year because the federal funding is not, they're not using this facility as much because of COVID, some of the issues there. So you already know. So, um, you already know this group, JSE, um, work with children, um, and with Joe Cataris and their deputies and the people that work there. Boy, they put in a lot of hours. And again, um, trying to get deputies and, and people to work there in their facilities is like Lloyd had already lined a lot of this out. Is, uh, becoming a challenge. With Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment, we've, me, uh, Commissioner Littlebear and Brian Albach went and visited the site, um, that we are going to be building. Actually Ron, a 72 unit now they found because of some of the areas that when the architects built some of it or were laying it out, that it wasn't kind of how we do our housing or whatever, however you say it, how we lay it out. They built them bigger with bigger lobbies, different stuff like that, that we could actually do more units in it. So, um, we're thinking, um, of moving up to about 72 units, which is even better. But the site is, is an awesome site. There's some other housing and building going up over there. So, um, the park, I think, uh, if anything, um, we could get with, uh, the Housing Authority and see if we can do some other stuff to the park over there and upgrade that. I think that would be something to do with this Housing Authority and the city. That would be good. Lloyd?
Oh, I just wanted to add that park, you remember it was a community-built park.
Yes. That's what I was saying. So maybe we could do some upgrades and since we're getting a lot of housing over there. Um, also visited, uh, the New Underwood site. Um, we are looking at for Pennington County, running a more efficient, safe environment for our, uh, people. We do a lot of veterans, uh, elderly and, and disabled people. And just looking at maybe locking doors, like the front doors, so people can't just walk in those doors. Um, we're looking at maybe we have the police department, we have them, uh, walk around in the units in Penning, in Rapid City. And just walk through the halls once in a while and, and just show their presence. Why we do that is to build rapport also, uh, for safe environment. Well, we have the deputy sheriffs. Uh, one of them is Deputy Jones out in New Underwood. He actually walks through the unit and, um, builds relationship. So we thought maybe we could look into doing, we do pay the police department, I think, a contract for doing that. Um, because they're not, you know, it's, they're going above and beyond going in the, uh, buildings and different areas, uh, just for presence. Cause we've got, um, some pretty huge units in Rapid City, let alone New Underwood. Um, you already know there's a safety factor. So we talked with, uh, Deputy Jones, Commissioner Littlebear, Brian Albach and me about how we can make it a little bit different. And he also said, uh, maybe a manager on site for contact and, um, lock doors and maybe some cameras. And then also there's room in their lobby because they have a huge lobby and a kitchen that's not used very often, that we can make more units there as well. So, um, pretty exciting. And then we got to eat at Godfathers, which I haven't ate for a long time. Um, I didn't know they had Godfathers in, um, New Underwood. And then saw one of our, um, highway guys having lunch. So we bought him lunch, um, pizza. So, uh, Dan. So I thought that was pretty cool. And then I'd like to go out there, which we didn't have time that day to see our New Underwood unit. But Dan explained he was out there fixing some stuff. So it was cool to see some of, one of our Pennington County people out there and just visit with some of the issues that are happening out there as well. So, um, it was a great day and that's about all.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the vouchers, the amount of 516,368 dollars?
Some.
Eight cents? Got a motion by Commissioner Adcock, second by Commissioner Loester. Any public comments? Any comments by the Commission? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is, uh, executive session for some, um, personnel and contractual.
Move to go on the executive session. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Need a motion to go back into regular session.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Items from the public. Anyone here wishing to address the Commission? Seeing none. We'll go on to item 17. This is the request for, uh, the Wilsons.
John Smith, Highway Department.
Go ahead, Sean.
So, uh, item 17 is a request for variance ordinance 14 for a second approach. Uh, this was before the Commission and was continued on the 10-19 meeting. Um, after that, uh, there was an onsite meeting, uh, between, uh, Mr. Wilson, the Highway Department Planning and Zoning and Commissioner Oskanek. Uh, Mr. Wilson kind of laid out kind of what he's looking to do with this second garage. He's looking to make it much more handicap accessible to his current structure. Uh, in doing so, he's going to have to add quite a bit of fill. Um, with explaining that, um, I took some grade shots to kind of see what we're looking at and found that, uh, in order to get from the upper level to the lower level with that proposed fill, it would increase the slope of the driveway to just over 22%, which is significantly higher than what we would allow. Um, in knowing this now, uh, we would agree that a second approach is warranted for this property and we would be in support of this variance.
So I'll move approval.
Second. I've got a motion to approve and a second. Randy, any comments you want to make or answer questions or?
No, I believe, uh, everything's going good as far as we are right now. We're working through our little problems we had and
Okay.
Good for the next session then.
Super. Any other public comment regard to this? Back to the Commission. Any further comments?
Thank you, uh, oh, Chairman. Thank you, uh, Joe and Sean and, uh, Jason for going out there and working with Mr. Wilson and, uh, finding the issues and finding the solution. So I thank you for your time and Mr. Wilson, your time as well.
Okay. Thank you for your time, Commissioners.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to going to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Got a motion to go to Board of Adjustment and a second. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item A.
Code Sack Environmental Planner. Item A is variance VA 21 dash 34. It is to allow an accessory structure, a garage to be located in the front yard of a residential zoning district, uh, less than one acre in size. Uh, the applicant landowners Randy and Janice Wilson. Uh, the location of the property is at 12645 Campfire Drive. Current land use is rule is, uh, residential. Current zoning is rule residential. When looking at variances, we take a two-pronged approach. For prong number one, uh, whether granting the variance forms counter to public interests. I'll read the responses. For number one, no, the request does not appear to be a threat or nuisance to the neighborhood. Uh, number two, detached, uh, garages in the front yard are present in this area, however, they are on lots that are above one acre or illegal, non-conforming. Number three, no, the zoning ordinance requires an accessory building, uh, not to be located in any required front yard, uh, setback in residential zoning districts less than one acre. Detached garages are permitted use with, um, in the area with an approved building permit. Number four does not apply. Uh, number five, placement of the garage within the required setback does not appear to part, to harm the public or community. Uh, for prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant the property. Number one, yes. Due to the property being a corner lot with frontage on three sides, the majority of the property is considered a front yard. Requiring the detached garage in only the backyard area, the garage would encroach on the rear yard setback of 25 feet, which would require a variance. Uh, 1A, enforcing the zoning ordinance would limit billable area on the property and would create a setback issue for the rear property lot line. Uh, 1B, on a typical lot, the location of the proposed garage would be considered a side yard, which would be allowed for the location for detached structure. Uh, currently on the property, there's a single-family residence with a, a bridge septic system. Uh, this was routed around for, um, interdepartmental review. Uh, County Highway said that they have no comments as long as the setbacks requirements are met. The proposed garage will be 36 by 42. Uh, with that, staff is recommending approval of variance VA 21 dash 34. As staff finds that there is a special condition on the property that would create a hard trip. So staff recommends approval with conditions.
I'll move.
Second. Got a motion to approve and a second. Uh, further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion carried.
As I just stated, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Item B.
Morning Commissioners. Jason Thonson, Deputy Planning Director. Item B is variance 21 dash 35 to allow a 12-foot by 32-foot structure that is less than the 20-foot by 20-foot requirement to be used as a single-family residence on the subject property. The applicants have requested to withdraw this request. Uh, it is better served as a, uh, conditional use permit rather than a variance. And staff recommends approval of the withdrawal of variance 21 dash 35 with the applicant's concurrents.
So it will be coming back to us.
As a conditional use permit, it will go to the planning commission.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Adcock and a second by who?
Mr. Chair.
After Loester. Uh, Commissioner LaCroy.
Thanks, Jason. I know I bug you about this. You know, the, so this is going to be a, in order to do like these tiny homes, you know, our standard is 20 by 20. Then she would have, uh, we would have went through this process, but she's choosing, are they choosing to go to a conditional use for these tiny type homes? Is that more appropriate to communicate to our constituents?
Right. Yeah. At this time, we don't address, uh, tiny homes other than fees for placing them, either in mobile home parks or by themselves. We don't really address the requirements for them. So we are working on a draft for a zoning ordinance or, uh, update.
Okay. Cause I was just reviewing this and I said, I seen the 20 by 20 requirement. Well, this really doesn't fit it, but it's, but this, you know, the, some of these are pretty nice.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, indeed. Yeah. The 20 by 20 requirement applies to stick-built model homes. So not so much these.
Okay. I just wanted to put another plug in for that. Thanks.
Any public comment regarding to this? I will read in for the, for the record, uh, that we do have a, um, email, uh, from, uh, Eric and Sarah, uh, Bothencamp. Basically saying with respect to the variance requested by Jane and Don Patino for the structure less than 20-foot by 20-foot. We are writing to let you know, we do not have any concerns about this and in fact fully support this requested variance. As one of the closest property owners to this locations, we have no issues with this and we hope the county feels the same. Further comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair. So the 20 by 20, that's a dimension, but it equates to 400 square feet. And that picture, I don't know that they gave us a specific size, but if you took the 36 by 12, that'd be probably 400 square feet. So should we be looking at changing that wording more to a square foot, uh, being a threshold than a particular dimension or both?
Yeah. I think when we do the, uh, zoning ordinance amendment, uh, to cover tiny homes, I think that'll help this out a lot.
Okay. You're going to probably start seeing a lot more of these.
Right. That's our suspicion as well.
Garrett? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C.
Code Sack Environmental Planner. Item C is subdivision regulation variance SV 21 dash 24. It is to waive the requirement to dedicate and improve an undeveloped section line right-of-way. The applicant landowner is Dana Kirstedt. The agent is KTM Salute Design Solutions. Janelle's in the audience if there are any questions. The location of the property is southwest of the intersection of Hermosa Court and Rushmore Ranch Road. Uh, currently it is vacant of any structures and is owned as a planned unit development. I apologize, I did not, uh, put the prongs in the presentation, so I'll just read them. Uh, so when we look at variances, we take a two-pronged approach. For prong number one, whether granting the variance forms counter to public interest. For number one, proposed track 35 revised has access off Hermosa Court. Number two, yes, the neighborhood is residential in nature. Improved, uh, rightsway do exist to provide access to the proposed track 35 revised and existing lots. Number three, no, where, uh, where an existing section line right-of-way or a portion of section line right-of-way is located within the new subdivision or adjoining any portion of the new subdivision, the entire 66 feet of the section line right-of-way shall be dedicated and improved by the developer at the approval of the Board of Commissioners. There are existing accessories within the subdivision that provides access to all existing lots. Number four, yes, the current comprehensive plan identifies the property as planned unit development. Uh, the Rushmore Ranch planned unit development requires a three-acre lot size. Proposed track 35 revised will be 29.57 acres. Number five, no, Hermosa Court is existing right-of-way, uh, that is used to provide access to proposed track 35 for emergency response purposes. And for prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant the variance. Uh, number one, yes, access to the proposed lots is provided by a, a dedicated and improved right-of-way of Hermosa Court. 1A requiring the section line, uh, to be improved or dedicated would require the applicant to construct a second access road to the property when an existing access exists. And B, uh, the ordinance is in place to ensure that all lots of a proposed subdivision are provided access. Proposed track 35 revised has existing access off Hermosa Court. Uh, currently as the properties sit, uh, track 35 is 3.12 acres and track 34R is 26.45 acres. They're proposing to combine it into track 35 revised, which will be, uh, 29.57 acres. This was routed out for an interdepartmental review. No major comments or concerns were received. Uh, on June 1st, 2021, the Board of Commissioners approved layout plan LPL 21 dash 26, um, with conditions. Uh, this request will satisfy a condition of approval and will allow the platting process to continue. So with that, staff is recommending approval of subdivision regulation variance SV 21 dash 24. As there are currently existing improved right-of-way Hermosa Court that provides access to the existing subdivision and proposed lot.
I'll move.
All right. Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, back to the, uh, Commission. Any further comments? I have a motion to approve. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Need to read the following, uh, into the record. Following planning and zoning matters in our uncontested hearings are those which the planning department has not yet received or provided comment contesting the item. The documents for each item have been reviewed by the Commissioners and decisions during these hearings will be made based on the information provided in the packet and the short presentation. If we receive comment contesting the item, the matter will be addressed in the same manner as a contested hearing. Item D, uncontested hearing.
Do you want to come out of Board of Adjustment?
I'll move.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Motion and second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good morning Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. Item D is minor plot MPL 21 dash 65 for Dana Kirstedt. To combine two lots, took three, track 35 revised of Rushmore Ranch State Subdivision in accordance with section 400.3 of the Pennington County Subdivision Regulations. And staff did recommend approval and Planning Commission recommended approval of minor plot MPL 21 65 with five conditions.
Second. Got a motion and a second. To approve. Any further comment? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we move to contested hearings. Item E.
Item E is rezone RZ 21 dash 28 to rezone 5.46 acres from Agriculture District to Rancheck District. The applicant is Caputa Acres LLC. The property is located at 15389 Dawkins Road. It consists of 5.46 acres. The current zoning is Agriculture District. It is used for residential and agriculture at this time. It was routed around for the interdepartmental review. There was no items of concern. Uh, this is in, um, harmony with the surrounding land uses and the proposed comprehensive plan. So staff is recommending approval, um, of rezone 21 28. And Planning Commission did recommend approval of rezone 21 dash.
It's to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Oskanek and a second by Commissioner LaCroy. Uh, any public comment? Any comments by the applicant? Back to the Commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F.
Item F is layout plan LPL 21 dash 67 for Caputa Acres LLC, took three tracks, one and two of Caputa Acres. Uh, the property as it sits today is zone agriculture. It is located off of 1.5, or excuse me, 15389 Dawkins Road. It consists of 58.49 acres. It is on Agriculture District. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. There were no items of concern. There were no items of concern. Uh, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request and the planning commission did recommend approval of LPL twenty-one sixty-seven.
Move approval.
Got a motion by Commissioner Laster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaCroy, any public comment? Any further comments by the commission? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item G.
Item G is preliminary plat PPL twenty-one dash sixty-six for H and H Land Company number two LLC. Brian Hammerback is the agent. Is to create tracks two through eleven of South Caputa addition. Uh, this property um, is owned by H and H Land Company. The surveyor is DC Scott. Uh, consists of thirty-eight-point-seven acres, is located off of East Highway forty-four and Saint Germain Road. It is zoned rural residential district. It did go through a rezone at a previous uh, Board of Commission meeting. This was routed around, there was no items of concern as it is in harmony with the comprehensive plan and future land use. And staff is recommending approval of preliminary plat PPL twenty-one sixty-six and planning commission recommended approval of preliminary plat PPL twenty-one sixty-six with sixteen conditions.
I move.
Second. Got motion by Commissioner Laster, second by, or by Commissioner Adcock, second by Commissioner Laster. Uh, any public comment? Any comment by the commission? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item H.
Item H is ordinance amendment OA twenty-one twenty-one for Pennington County to add new ordinance number seven thirty-five Pennington County Building Code and Construction Ordinance. Uh, the reason for this ordinance is to provide basic building code requirements for erecting, constructing, enlarging, moving, or demolishing any building or structure in Pennington County. Uh, the planning commission did hear this, that, at the original hearing, they did continue it uh, to make a few changes. Those changes are the strikeouts and the bold. Um, I will go through the basics um, of this ordinance. Essentially, it'll require an initial sighting. Uh, so once the building permit is um, submitted, the building inspector will go out and look at the initial sighting to verify that the structure is meeting setbacks and that it can be placed in the location um, that they are proposing and it's in accordance with the building permit in the event that the building inspector finds some conflict. Uh, this does give the ability of the building inspector to require a survey at that time or an affidavit from the building or the property owner to verify that the setbacks will be met. Um, the second inspection will be at a final inspection once final grading is done to verify that the structure that was proposed in the building permit was actually the structure that was constructed and it's in accordance with uh, ordinances. Uh, the other it, um, big item in this is that the contractor's licenses will be required. Uh, there is one exception in here that if they are in good standing and they have a contractor's license with the city of Rapid City, they will not be required to get a contractor's license with Pennington County. Um, so, cuz we have our track-it system, so we can see all of the contractors that are licensed within the city and in good standing. So as long as they're meeting those requirements, um, they will not have to get uh, contractor's license in Pennington County. If they are not um, a licensed contractor in good standing in Rapid City, our procedure is very similar to the requirements that Rapid City has. Uh, with some exceptions, we just require the A and B license. Um, any of the plumbing and electrical will be done through the state um, as part of the review um, for the final building plans, will be, we will verify that they did have the estate inspections for plumbing and electrical.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you, Brittany. Good, my question, you finished right at the very end, was, yeah, the electrical, the plumbing are, are gonna be state inspections like they do in Wall or Billup or places like that is, is, is how that's gonna be handled. And I think one of the things I'd probably like to have you review to the commission so we can communicate to others is uh, it's a, number six B is the homeowners who builds and constructs. You know, if you own your own home. If you read through that a little bit, you can still do your additions and, and that type of stuff. I, I would just like, if you could explain that a little bit more.
Or is it what page was that online?
It's on page eight.
Okay.
Number six, oh, six B.
Oh, yes, that a homeowner who builds, constructs, alters, or adds to their building of property that they own, they can still do that without a contractor's license?
Yeah.
And they are, and there is one exception in there that they cannot build more than one single-family dwelling in a five-year period without obtaining a contractor's license.
Yes.
And that was a question I had, is that a, is that part of a builder's code someplace or not?
The city has this, the same requirements.
Of the five year. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross Kaner.
So Brittany, the building inspector, the county building inspector, what qualifications and education and experience do they have to have before they can go out there and do an inspection?
So, right now, our building inspector, we have that position open right now cuz the current building inspector is no longer in our office. Um, at that, when we had hired her, she was working on getting her licensed building official. Uh, so that is still gonna be a requirement that they have to have a license um, through the um, International Coal Council in order to do the inspections.
So do we have a, a job description for that position?
Yes.
When you get a minute, can you send that to me?
Sure, yes, absolutely.
So Brittany, do the other communities within the county have the same requirement as the city of Rapid City?
Um, there, each city kinda has theirs own. Uh, some of the cities do not have any. Uh, Mead County does have requirements, Lawrence County has requirements um, that are similar. I think these are pretty basic to start with. Um, because there's not like framing inspections, there's not, it's just coming to the sighting. I think those are the biggest issues that we have right now are with setbacks and the fact that people are building structures or adding um, living space to structures. So I think these will address those and then the contractor's licenses. Um, so there's some accountability, uh, some of the comments that we've had in our office from other contractors and from the public or that there needs to be some accountability for the contractors. Um, some of the contractors don't feel like it's a level playing field, the ones that have to get licenses and be bonded and do those things and then there's others that don't have to. Um, so we try to address those concerns and be somewhat basic um, and not get too much into the weeds first um, and address some of the major issues that we're having now with the setbacks and the actual structures that are being built.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Kaner.
So Brittany, in the, we got the one-mile and three-mile limit is uh, that separates the county from the city. So if somebody is building in the county, but they're in the three-mile limit of the city, then the city building inspector.
No, it's ours.
This is where I'm getting a little.
It's ours.
The one-mile is also ours?
Yes, so the one-mile, the only inspections that the city does in the one-mile are for the septic systems. Yes. In the three-mile, the only inspections that the city does is anything that has to do with road improvements or subdivision requirements. So um, in those subdivisions where they have, where they do the plating, where they do the roads, the curb and gutter, the drainage, things like that, that is done through the city inspectors, but we, they also have to get a construction permit with us for the dirt work and the stormwater. Those are still reviewed by um, the highway department for drainage. But those are, those road improvements and those subdivision improvements are the only things that are done by the city, the actual buildings or the county.
So that county building inspector be responsible for any new construction within the three-mile limit from Rapid City?
Correct.
And essentially the whole county then?
Yes.
Uh, with the exception of incorporated municipalities?
Correct, the only, there are some exemptions in here for ag properties um, and for structures that are under that twenty by twenty. Um, for accessory structures under twenty by twenties, we're not gonna go out and inspect sheds. Um, just large garages, large accessory structures and then on property that's zoned and taxed to ag, those accessory structures, we won't do only, it'll only be single-family residences in those, on those properties.
But the only exemplars would be those not requiring building a, 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 a building permit anyway, right?
Except for the accessory structures. So for accessory structures that are over four hundred square feet, they will require, but if they're under the four hundred square feet, they will not require an inspection. So a twelve-by-twelve shed would not require an inspection.
So will you go back, uh, when you first started on this, what was the planning commission? What direction did they provide?
Um, they just had some concerns with the language. They wanted the language, if you look on the first page um, where it struck out, they wanted that to be exactly what it says under our five-oh-six, under our building permits. So that, those are the requirements to have a building permit, so they wanted that language to be exactly the same as what's in section five-oh-six.
Okay, and they, and so they made that change?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and they did give approval?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I was gonna say, one of the big, some of that conversation, if you don't mind, uh, we were talking about the alteration of it and so whenever we were in that conversation, it came down to, well, what's that ordinance say? And that's how can we came up with, well, let's just make it mirror the ordinance so there's no question.
Okay.
We already voted on this?
No.
There's not been a motion or anything.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Go ahead.
Got a, I got a motion by Commissioner Laster, a second by.
Wish I had cock.
Any further discussion?
Last time.
Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Point of privilege for just a minute. Um, I forgot to ask Holly um, how our leadership classes were going, I was gonna ask it during our um, meeting talk. I was gonna ask Holly, she said she's been through some leadership classes, how's that going?
They're, they're going great.
What kinda stuff are you doing, Holly?
Uh, we've done public speaking. Uh, this next session on Thursday is local leadership elected officials. Um, there's a panel of speakers coming from city, state, and county to speak to the class. Um, we'll also be attending the um, leadership lun- the luncheon, the critical, critical issues luncheon for the workforce issues that are having. Um, but no, so far it's, it's been absolutely great. We toured the public safety building. Um, Chief Hedrick and Chief Deputy Mueller spoke to the class.
Well, how many months or how many, how long does it take to go through this class?
Nine-month class.
Wow.
Um, this is my third or fourth month. So graduation is next May.
And how many people went through this, are going through this?
Twenty-four in the group.
Wow. I was gonna, I apologize, um, Commissioner, I was gonna ask her during our committee reports, but I forgot.
It's okay.
Pretty interesting.
I need to ask a special privilege now also. I missed an item. I had s- suggested to Holly that we just throw this out as part of a discussion. As part of my regular job, I meet with lots of county commissions. And what I've discovered is most of them meet at eight o'clock, starting at eight o'clock in the morning with, with the idea being that they can pretty well be assured that they'll be done by noon at that point in. So I asked Holly if there's any particular reason why we start at nine instead of eight. And so I thought I would just throw it out as far as the commission to give some thought to it as to would you prefer to start at eight rather than nine? Obviously, there would have to be some, a few changes, adjustments made if we changed it to eight o'clock, but uh.
I'd have to think about it, but mostly those two that have to travel in.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I think we had this discussion while back and the biggest, I think, setback that we had or concern that we received back was the timing for our Board of Adjustments were at set at ten-thirty and getting, if I remember right, getting the constituents who may live outside or work, you know, cuz most of them were from Hill City or further out areas. I'm just passing on that, I remember that information cuz we were talking about either starting earlier or later, I don't quite remember. We talked about later and early, right?
We had a discussion about having nighttime meetings and it just was determined that there wasn't any cost savings or um, any benefit to doing that at that time.
I do remember something about the travel time for coming in, but I mean.
I agree.
I, I was gonna say, you know, I, I might would echo that if I end up having to move further east based on what's going on with my land. It, it might be a lot longer for me to get here.
Well, I mean, like, like Ron, it only twenty-five miles, it takes about a half hour to get here, so he'd have to get up a little, he probably gets up earlier anyhow, but.
I, I wouldn't care about eight, I just make sure everybody else, Gary, I'm, I'm with you, that, that everybody else is in compliance with that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not necessarily pushing for it, but I think if it, uh, you know, today is gonna be maybe an exception for us that we're actually. Typically, we're pushing past that period of time, so just wanted to throw it out. It's, let's think about it a little bit and we'll bring it back for, for the discussion.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. Move to go in an executive session.
I got a motion in a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thumbs up, John?
I've never told.
Need a motion. I got a motion, do I have a second, in a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. John? John? We're waiting for ya.
That bear, John.
Throw that canyon away.
Good afternoon commissioners, John Moore, Pennington County Human Resources. So I have a motion that I'd like to request on behalf of the IT department and it's to authorize the ID, IT department to hire a prospective applicant as a senior desktop analyst, excuse me, at a grade, uh, DBM grade of B twenty-three, step seven at twenty-three fifty to an hour with an effective date to be determined upon acceptance.
Is there a motion?
Remove.
Yeah, I got a motion in a second.
Stop just a second. I had to turn the page. There's a little bit more that goes with the motion.
Okay.
Sorry. Uh, and then once the applicant accepts and provides a start date, we will send a hire notice which contains the name, title, amount, and effective date.
Okay, with Lloyd and Deb? Okay, one question.
Yes, sir.
We're really doing this motion for a specific person without using a name?
Correct.
What happens if that person says no?
This is a void.
We're back to zero.
We're back.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you commissioners.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.